One of the discussion items, so we're going to, uh, we're gonna move up the TIF discussion item first, um, to get right down to the buggy, so. Megabuck Chuck. Uh, before he gives it the presentation, I would just like to, uh, announce, I don't know if everybody knows, that Chuck is going to be leaving us. I'm saddened by that Chuck. You've been such a blessing to us. Do you want to hug it out now, or you want to wait till later?
We can wait till later, Shane.
We'll wait till later. We'll wait till later, but, uh, what, I just want to say this publicly, what a blessing you have been to the city of Burlington. It has been a pleasure knowing you and working with you, and, uh, uh, the city that is getting you is blessed, uh, to be getting you, so.
Amen.
Um, we appreciate you Chuck. Please, continue, and we're gonna hug it out later, alright.
Is that a group thing?
No, it possibly could be.
Alright, so for my last presentation to you, I'm going to talk about tax increment financing policy, and I'll refer to tax increment financing as TIF from here on out in the interest of time. It might be my best presentation, most interesting for sure. So if you remember, back at the beginning of the year, you all gave a, a directive to the planning commission to do four things. The first was to create a streamlined permitting process for food trucks, which has been completed. The second is to update a bike and pedestrian plan, which is in the process. The third was to create a plan for addressing vacant buildings, that's still needs to be done. Then the last is develop a tax increment financing policy, and the planning commission has discussed this for four meetings and come up with some suggestions that they would like you to think about and consider. So very briefly, I'm gonna go over what tax increment financing is for people at home who don't know. A tax increment financing is a tool that cities can use to fund development projects. Basically, what happens is you take a piece of property, or a bunch of different properties, and you put them in a urban renewal area, and then in a TIF district, and you, um, once you set that district, the assessed value gets frozen, and then once you do a project, as that assessed value increases, you capture all of the extra increment off of that increased assessed value. So if the property was valued at, say, a hundred dollars, you did a project, it's valued at a hundred thousand dollars, all the taxable valuation from that nine-hundred-ninety...
Nine.
Ninety-nine thousand dollar valuation goes directly into the tax increment fund, which you can then use to reimburse for any type of development projects there. So this has been used on a wide variety of proj- projects in Burlington, the Flint Hills Manor site, construction of the public works facility, public library, Hotel Burlington, railroad quiet zones, currently is being used for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge and the Park West subdivision. You'll notice that's a, it's a wide range of projects, that's one of the strengths of TIF. It's, you can use it for a lot of different things, it's very flexible. So, on to the big question, why do we need a TIF policy? And this was debated at length in the planning commission, and the conclusion they came to is that ideally, a TIF policy would not be needed. You would not need public financing to, and sim- to stimulate private development. There are however, two main reasons for considering the adoption of such a policy. And I'm gonna talk about those two reasons now. One of those is that over two-thirds of our housing stock is forty-eight years old or older, and over one-third of our housing stock is seventy-five years old or older. Now, this might not be as big of a deal considered by itself, but when you go back to look at our, our population pyramid, what you'll notice is that between nineteen ninety and two thousand ten, while our population has stayed relatively stable, the age distribution of resident, of residents has shifted quite a bit. For residents under forty-four years old, we've lost about twenty-five percent, and gained that for residents over forty-five years old. We have a surplus of housing priced under a hundred and fifty thousand, and a surplus priced over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. Younger residents, um, tend to prefer the newer housing, and they tend to not be able to afford anything over two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. This was identified in our Des Moines County housing study. This kind of population shift is not sustainable long-term. As younger residents move out, and the older residents start aging out, uh, we're going to see a, a decline in population if something doesn't change here. And the second point deals with our val- taxable valuation. So we are still seeing a little bit of growth in our taxable valuation from year to year, but the rate of that growth is decreasing, while at the same time, our costs for services and in- infrastructure are increasing. So these two trends together lead to another unsustainable, uh, economic pattern for the city that spells long-term difficulties. And so because of these two reasons, the planning commission thought that examining a TIF policy, uh, to incentivize private development could be a good idea. They studied a multitude of different policies from cities in Iowa, to come up with some suggestions on different policy themes to adopt for the city of Burlington. So to start off, they identified seven different best practices that should be included as part of any TIF policy. The first is that the city, the project must show that it would not happen without the city's financial assistance. The second is they prefer to see rebates over the shortest term possible. This limits the risk for the city in any type of TIF, uh, development. The third is that developer equity must be equal to or greater than city funding. If you're getting a hundred thousand dollars from the city, you should put in at least a hundred thousand dollars, preferably more. The fourth is that TIF for private development must generate TIF increments sufficient to be self-supporting. The fifth is any development receiving TIF increment is not eligible for tax abatement, and vice versa. The sixth is that change, chain-type stores, including retail stores, service stations, or restaurants should not be eligible for TIF funds. And then the seventh is develop a TIF release plan. And this is a plan that would go over how often TIF will be released, and go back into the school, school district in the county. So the first policy theme suggested by the planning commission is that a, any TIF development needs to be compatible with a comprehensive plan. And this ensures that projects funded with TIF money advance a public goal agreed upon by the council in a public document. Cities that use this approach right now are Marion and Iowa City. The second policy theme gives TIF incentive contingent on completing certain categories of projects, and the planning commission chose the affordable and mid-range housing as a category that this policy should, uh, aim to advance. And, and our housing study identifies the a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars as the affordable mid-range housing, um, range you should shoot for. Uh, cities using this approach are Johnston, Iowa.
That's the only one?
Huh?
That's the only one?
City or county?
The city of Johnston.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the only one specifically using the, the category approach where they're incentivizing certain types of projects. And the third one is something that, it's, well, it's the most different. There's no city in Iowa currently using this, but it's, uh, "TIF projects must meet a specified ratio of public to private investment." And this ensures that any project funded by TIF is financially sustainable, and contributes more to the financial health of the city than projects not receiving public money. The public to private ratio is a proxy for the amount of money needed to service a development, and the amount of tax revenue development, development will bring in. In other words, if we are incentivizing a development, we should incentivize developments that bring in a large amount of tax dollars compared to the money needed to maintain that development. For an exa- example, a twenty-to-one ratio would mean that a developer asking for a hundred thousand dollars would have to invest at least two million dollars into their development. There is a city using this, it's Fayette in Texas. And I want to expand on this a little bit more, because it is different and unique in not being used right now in Iowa. Right now Burlington currently has a total assessed value of about six-hundred-and-eighty-two million, and our total capitalized public assets are about a hundred and sixty-nine million, for a ratio of public to private of about, or private to public of about four-to-one. So if we are thinking about this as a home, this would be like you earning fifty thousand dollars a year while living in a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home. You're gonna struggle to be able to afford things like home repairs, your utility bills, really your basic needs. And we, we see this play out right now. We, we're struggling to afford our sewer separation, we're struggling to add safety personnel, we're struggling with our lot of our projects, and it's because we, we lack the, uh, the assessed value in relation to our, our obligations. What I wanted to re- to illustrate here is the type of property that really brings up that assessed value, uh, the prob- the private to public ratio. This is the one percent most productive, economically productive properties in the city. These properties are more a forty-to-one or fifty-to-one private to public ratio. So back to that home analogy, these are properties where somebody's making more like five-hundred-thousand dollars, living in a fifty-thousand-dollar home. And these are the kind of properties that make a city economically robust. They have little infrastructures serving them, and they're, they're bringing in a lot of tax dollars. So stress testing our policy, if we applied those three themes to our recent TIF development, this is what we would get. First, it is comprehensive plan compatible. The development provides a mix of single-family homes and duplexes, which satisfies the goals of providing a diverse range of housing options. Additionally, specific streets planned has been developed for the area, which is an infill opportunity. It's also affordable and mid-range, according to the Des Moines County housing study. The developer's proposed average price was two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which falls in the one-fifty to two-fifty range. The third criteria it, it doesn't meet. The infrastructure cost provided by the developer totaled approximately two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. The developer planned to sell homes on sixteen lots, averaging two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which comes to four million, so the ratio there is fourteen-to-one. This is still a positive for the city of Burlington. It is bringing in tax dollars, it is a good development. Could you go back to the previous slide Eric? But it's not the twenty-to-one ratio. And the planning commission suggested twenty-to-one, because we're currently struggling with some negative economic events, and those include our sewer separation project, and our property tax reassessments. And these events could not be foreseen. They, they came to us, they couldn't have been predicted, um, but we're struggling with them, and it's almost a guarantee that over time, we'll have other negative events that impact our community. Properties like these help to keep a city afloat during tough times. If we go back to that home analogy, somebody making fifty thousand dollars living in a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, if they run into economic trouble, they're not gonna be able to keep that home. But somebody making five-hundred thousand, living in a fifty-thousand-dollar home, they're gonna be in a much better position. So it's properties like these that have a, a high private to public ratio, and bring in a lot of tax dollars compared to the amount of money needed to service them, that make a city economically robust. So the council, or the planning commission chose that twenty-to-one ratio to ma- have more properties like this, and, uh, increase our economic sustainability over time. Alright, any questions?
You said there were two, um, negative events, just, you mentioned the sewer separation, and what was the second one? Infrastructure?
Uh, property tax reassessment, where, uh, the, the legislature for the state re-divided how property tax got doled out, and that's the backfill. If you hear Jim talking about the backfill, that's likely gonna go away in the future.
Charlie White? So I just did the math real quick.
Uh-huh.
The infrastructure cost for Deer Point was eleven-point-three percent of its overall increment, of its, of its, uh, value, overall value. And Park West was seven-point-one percent. Why the difference there?
Deer Point Estates had a longer street it was building, because there was a, a larger development. It also had a, a lift station, although I'm not sure if that was included in the cost.
You had two, uh, streets that you had to have that...
It was like a U-shape, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Kinda going down and then coming back around?
Deer Point had two streets that were extensions to reach the subdivision that had no housing on either one of them. So you had a lot of ca- of, uh, infrastructure costs that they weren't able to offset with any housing going along immediately with it.
So, but, and that kind of brings me to my point, is, um, not all of our community is set up in a position where sewer is essentially right there, and/or, uh, they're gonna be able to put one road in and meet the requirements, whether it's for fire protection, or any of those types, or access.
Mm-hmm.
So do you feel like creating this ratio and using that as the, the guideline, are we eliminating the potential for significant development, um, where perhaps for this developer, because he's gotta put all this new infrastructure in, it does violate the ratio, but for a future developer who may, uh, uh, build a spur off of that development, um, and meet the ratio, uh, do you feel like we're gonna be limiting ourselves there?
We would be limiting what type of development would be able to be incentivized by TIF, which could limit what gets developed in the future. Uh, the thinking about the twenty-to-one private to public ratio is that if we're gonna spend public money to develop these, we might as well get the most bang for our buck as possible. And like I said, Park West, it's a positive for the city. Would it be as much of a positive as, say, developing one of the downtown warehouse building two apartments? Probably not, because it's not going to, there's gonna be more infrastructure, which is...
Sure.
You have to maintain over time. And we're kind of in that position in the city right now, where we're struggling to maintain what we have. We should be spending about four million dollars on road projects a year, but we can only afford one-point-four, one-point-two million.
Absolutely.
So we're, we're behind the curve, so the intent here is to have development that pushes us up on that curve, uh, quicker than just normal development patterns.
And I understand that density is really the name of the game in order to be successful in the long-term. However, I, if I look at a project, and I think of, uh, the area south of town that is primed for development, there's only so many infill projects we can have in our community, and that's what I consider to be more or less the low-hanging fruit. That won't be there forever, um, and I think as we look to the future in trying to increase that development, uh, whether it is high-density or low-density, then, um, the TIF makes more sense for those developers who have to come in and put in a larger infrastructure. Uh, I, I think of, uh, the Deer Point, you know, if he's, if he has those larger roads, well, that to me is the exact reason why TIF exists, is to help cover those significant costs. And if we would say no to that, because it doesn't meet the ratio from, or it doesn't meet the percentage that we're looking for, um, I, I think that's counterintuitive to the productivity that we're trying to get out of it.
Sure.
I, I understand why they come up with it, it's a great s- stress test, but, but the idea, I think, I think it's gonna limit development, um, especially in some of the outlying areas where really our community's primed for development.
Yeah, it would, it would limit development there, that's for sure.
I guess, uh, my concern would be too, is there's only one, one, uh, city in America us- using that, that, uh, program, and meanwhile, the other three, the other towns that you listed, which are in Iowa, Marion, Iowa City, and Johnston, by all accounts are growing.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is it would essentially incentivize developments that are less dense, but a higher price point, in order to meet the increment level necessary to fall within the ratio that we're setting, that we're creating, um, to fall within that guideline. And that is also counterproductive to what we're trying to do, because now we're creating new housing that doesn't necessarily fall within that affordable area where we see the most need.
Yeah, I, I think the affordable criteria would need to work with the private to public ratio to avoid that situation you described.
Any other questions? Please do. Quest. Yeah, I know, I like that word.
You guys...
I do like a lot of the things that you've brought forward. I think that they, they, it shows that there's a, they've put a lot of time and effort into this, so, um, I think the, the foundation's there for a good program.
Yeah, and this is a, a big program and policy for the city, so it's good to just start having the conversation and talking about if we are gonna incentivize development, what type of development do we wanna have, or do we wanna incentivize?
I'm on your page, my friend. Alright, I'm... It's all give and take, you know, it's not gonna be the perfect setup, but I, I would like to just throw this out there again. Looking at other communities, that's all good and great, but we are Burlington, we're a little bit different, so we just need to keep that in mind as well moving forward. We gotta do what's best for us. We get ideas from other communities, but we'll do what, we'll do what we gotta do. Anything else? You guys are good? Alright.
Good starting point.
Sounds good.
Alright.
I'll miss seeing you there Charlie.
Yeah, I'll miss you all too.
I know it was you for now.
As you do this, as you're looking at this, one of the things that, um, is, and I didn't, I think I went to your intro meeting that you had? Actually, I went to your intro one, and then you didn't have a quorum, so I don't, I don't know if I went to any of, of the meetings that you had. It's, as you look at that private, public-private investment, and looking at where we are leverage-wise, and, and long-term trying to put us in a good financial position, um, it matches, or, some of the issues that come up with what you said. We, we aren't necessarily comparable to other communities, we are different. But if you look at what we are compared to other communities across the state, the towns that are over twenty thousand a population, um, our debt, our debt load, uh, if you look at what we, how, what we have leveraged, uh, the average, I mean, every, every community is allowed to, you, you, they use a formula to determine how much you can borrow. It's based on your valuation. And the lower evaluation you have, the less you can afford to borrow. And what your, your point that you're getting at Charlie is how do you get, if a, if you have, if your population is at a given level, how do you make sure that you leverage, uh, your valuation? That's part of what your TIF should be looking to do. Anything that you're doing long-term, because that's what really supports what we're able to do operationally, operationally. Average community uses about forty-four percent of its debt capacity. You mentioned the comparison cities there. What were they?
Um, Marion, Iowa City, and Johnston.
So Marion is using thirty-nine percent of its debt capacity. Iowa City is using nineteen percent of its debt capacity. Johnston?
Mm-hmm.
Are they above twenty thousand? I don't think they are. They're still below that. Burlington is using sixty-five percent of its debt capacity. So you can look at, you know, the look, the range is from eight percent to seventy-three percent. We're not the, the highest usage of debt capacity, but we are at that extreme. When it comes to TIF financing, out of what we have, what do we TIF within our community? The average of those twenty, twenty commu- or towns over twenty thousand is using a, is setting aside, out of their valuation, six-point-five percent of its valuation for TIF projects. Burlington's putting aside ten-point-four percent. The highest is, um, eleven-point-eight percent. Example with Iowa City, they're using two-point-two percent. Marion is using six-point-nine percent. Just for an example, if you start looking at the policies that they're using at these, in these communities, there are different types of communities, they're high-growth areas. They're, they're leveraging programs, but they have so much more flexibility to leverage with, and we are already stretched, uh, if you look at where we are, we're not an outlier, but we're at the...
Pretty doggone close.
We're close to that, we're close to an outlier. We're on the, on the extreme for what we're doing, and we have consistently done that for a long period of time, leveraged debt. And you ha- and, and that's so, may, we have to be very careful how we leverage debt, because we're, we're already doing it pretty, pretty well, and it's not what gets you, uh, just leveraging debt doesn't get you into a good position.
What percentage of our TIF is outside of the downtown area?
I wouldn't have any clue.
The downtown isn't much of a TIF district?
Uh, for area, the mo- the majority of the area and valuation is out in, uh, industrial park. Now where the debt has been done on projects, I wouldn't have a good breakdown, because and part of that is we, um, I don't know if a few even know Stephanie, but we used to have them separated, but some of the projects now, since we've combined the districts, they don't get separated out for where the debts at.
Do we know what percentage of our TIF is residential development?
Very little. Very little.
And, so most of it's tied up in the commercial side, or the redevelopment side?
Um, the biggest thing that we have done with TIF projects, we did the, historically, we did the, um, Burl- Hotel Burlington. But the two biggest projects that have, that garnered the most funds over the last deck fifteen years has been the public works facility and the Manor project. Uh, those, I mean, the Rec, Recplex, uh, used a decent chunk back when it was being developed, but the, where we ended up really, what I would say, over-leveraging, uh, the use of TIF was when we did the public works and the Manor project. And, and we haven't, and they were back, well, yeah, both of those ended up being backloaded projects, so we still are, our, our main principal payments are going towards those two projects. Most of, I mean, we've had more, more projects over the last couple of years that we finally started doing more, but...
Priv- private investment projects that are TIF are, where do most of those lie?
What do you mean to, private?
So, is the only TIF's private investment project, such as Park West, is that the only one that's TIF right now?
Um, if we have anything left Stephanie, it would be from fifteen years, ten to fifteen years ago on a refinancing, wouldn't it? Would that be fair to say? We just finished off, uh, debt on the hotel. I think that just got paid off. Wine Guard expansion would be for, and then the sale of the, the warehouse facility that, uh, that Development Corp owned, um, a few years back.
Charlie, the communities in Iowa that are using TIF for, uh, residential, um, are they having success with it? Are they seeing development as a result of it? If so, what increment are they seeing versus maybe not having the TIF? Is that something that the, uh, board looked at?
Yeah, they're having development, but there's, it's always the question of the chicken and the egg. Are they having development because of the TIF, or are they having development because...
Because there's a demand for development.
Right.
Was, was there any discussion about the length of time on the payback?
Yes, uh, the commission said that they would like to see rebates over a short-term, uh, five to ten years, and that really limits the, the city's risk in, in the ventures, because we're not paying out over a long period of time.
So like, tax abatements, or...
No, rebates. Like the Park West is getting a rebate over fifteen years? Or how many years is Park West getting?
I don't think you could TIF more than ten years on it.
It's a eleven-year project.
Eleven-year?
It's, well, ten, but it's sealed, it's called eleven-year project. You can go to fifteen, but you have to go for, you have to go for special consent from other parties.
Again, I, I prefer not to use TIF, but if we are, let's, let's max out what we can get back, for sure.
As Charlie has dealt with this, that, I mean, the planning and zoning did spend four meetings going through this, which, I mean, that's four months worth where they, and I think that you looked at several different policies and options to consider.
We looked at a number, and not just from growing cities, we looked at TIF policies from places like Otomoa, and, and other places more similar to us, but the, they weren't as impressed with their policies, and they thought that the, the three identified being compatible with the plan, advancing the affordable housing goal, and then the public to private ratio were three things that would be particularly helpful for our specific community.
So this, I think that the thought process there is, coming here at a council level, if you're looking to develop a TIF policy, it's not something that you're gonna see happen fairly quickly, if, if you're gonna take, put some good thought into what, what you're trying to do.
Oh, this needs to marinate, my friend. Make no mistake about that.
But I, I think density really, like I said, is the name of the game. It's gonna have to be in order to be successful. And, and at the end of the day, if you're gonna put up five and six-hundred-thousand-dollar homes, TIF, a, a, a ten or fifteen-thousand-dollar rebate on that lot is, is not a significant advantage when building those types of homes. This is gonna fall back to low to moderate, medium-income, uh, families, uh, looking for homes two-fifty and less, and, uh, with a higher density neighborhood. And we've talked, and, and I know that, um, you sent us all an article several months ago that talked about the advantages of viewing infrastructure, not necessarily as an asset, but as a liability, and the way around that in order to be successful is through density. So I think that will probably be the best, or the best way to move forward, is to keep that in mind.
Yeah, and it's definitely shifting your perspective on infrastructure. It does spur growth, but it's something that you're gonna have to maintain over time, and you wanna make sure we, flat-out, we really don't have enough money to maintain all of our infrastructure to satisfactory condition. So we need development that pays for itself, and then some more. I do wanna point out while I have this map up, the downtown has the most buildings that are ec- in the one percent most economically productive, and these are just the ones that are developed. We have a number of downtown buildings that are sitting vacant, that people are actively trying to develop, um, and those seem like they would be a little bit...
Where if somebody buys a building, rehabs it, that they don't pay taxes on the increment?
Right.
We have a ten-year, fairly aggressive, um, program, seven years, hundred percent tax abatement, then seventy-five, fifty, and twenty-five percent for the last three years. It's some of the most...
So we've already got something that...
It's some of the most aggressive tax abatement in the state.
To what this would be doing, for those, for those buildings, right?
Yep, and we have tax abatement citywide too. Uh, developers say the tax payment isn't necessarily as helpful to them, it helps the homeowners later on that may be purchasing the property, but whether or not they factor that into their home purchase is hard to say.
And that gets back to my point earlier, where if I buy a five-hundred-thousand-dollar house, the abatement is much more attractive than if I buy a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house. the abatement is much more attractive than if I buy a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house and seeing a discount on the lot or the home price that's, percentage-wise, it's larger, right?
Right.
I think when, I don't know that you looked at Dubuque, but as they were doing their development twenty-some years ago, they used TIF financing to do that, I think. I think it was in the ten thousand dollar range per unit that was developed in the downtown. They had a limit on how many they, how much they gave out each annually. But they were looking to promote downtown upper-story development. And that's fits with the, with your idea of what the recommendation that your group has come up with in terms of concentrated development that doesn't require a lot of new infrastructure costs.
But did they use the new type of TIF or the old type of TIF to do that? Did they rebate after development or did they go in?
I think that was the cash incentive upfront.
Okay, so they were writing a check upfront and?
Yeah. And the planning commission didn't want to limit TIF to just downtown buildings. So they chose the ratio instead of choosing an area. It's just much easier to do downtown.
Because of density.
Right, but you'll see Turnberry Cor is up there too, is one of the, in the one percent there. So it's possible to do with new building, new construction too.
All right. Yeah, we got some good stuff to think about. Chuck, man, you're worth your weight, my friend. You're worth your weight. How much do you weigh, by the way? We'll talk about it. All right. Let's do one more. Let's go to sanitary sewer rate study. Veenstra and Kim. Your name isn't Veenstra and Kim?
Leo Foley with Veenstra and Kim. I also have Meredith Pearl from Veenstra and Kim with me tonight. And Meredith is kind of the author of our sewer rate study that we, we've completed. She also has the models, so I can't be tricked up by, by too many questions that'll, that'll get me. Also, if you turn to the first page, oh, yeah, that'd be great. You can see we looked at five years of record and we looked at a lot of different things. A lot of people in the city helped us quite a bit, between Nick McGregor, Jesse Howe, Annette Croner, Charlie Nichols, Don Fitting and Jim. We were bugging a lot of people for a lot of information. So this isn't, this is a kind of an information grab to try to figure all this out. A lot of it gets down to some of the nasty words Charlie was saying about sewer separation and the costs that you know that you can't afford. So anyway, the five years of record, looking at the operation and maintenance, understanding you've got to do operation and maintenance on your collection as well as your wastewater treatment plant. Then you got to look at your population trends. Are you industrial going up and down, commercial, residential? Capital expenses, what are the immediate needs? Sometimes people call them prioritized needs, some people call them wish lists. You'll see those in there. Current revenue, your historical trends. You can quickly start to see how much money you've been spending every year and that quickly starts to tell us where we have to be. Then the proposed rates and then some of the things you were talking about earlier. Comparisons to surrounding areas. Okay, yours is always a little different because of the unmetered versus meters. So ninety percent of your dollars come from unmetered sewer accounts. And then non-residential versus residential, very typically, about ninety-three percent comes from residential. And that residential, a lot of it is unmetered. Your non-residential metered industrial, you really only have three of them. I think there's a fourth, but it's tr- it's not in the monitored thing. So we wanted to just show, you, you have three shown there that are, that are monitored. That means they get charged for flow, they get charged for BOD and they get charged for suspended solids. That's only one and a half percent of your revenue. Your year-end balances, that's always important. What's your year-end balance? Is it going up and down? Is it staying pretty steady? As you can see, yours is staying pretty steady. It's a fairly good balance at this time. I think we've, we've heard that you wanted to have a good balance because you knew sewer separation was coming and that's, that, that could be a big problem. What were your fiscal year eighteen revenues? Nine point one million, little bit higher on the expenditures, but not much. Fairly flat, which from our perspective, that's a good sign. Okay, this is just a little bit different, just showing you how you actually charge for sewer rates. A lot of you might know this because you get sewer bills. You're charged on an annual rate. You're charged by how many rooms, how many bathrooms, very different than if you, if you, each house had a water meter and was charged by water use. And then you have also the metered residential, which is five dollars and nine cents per thousand gallons plus a user fee. And again, all that's standard and fairly typical. Okay, so what do we need to do to, to, to just keep up? Keep up with the rates and keep up with the way you're going right now? We've recommended and will show you why, a three percent increase for the next five years on your unmetered accounts. And that three percent is approximately what you've been doing. And so that's to continue that. Then a bigger increase, a ten percent increase over the next five years for your metered. And the reason for that is your metered is paying quite a bit more than, I'm sorry, your unmetered is paying. And you, and you can see it right there. Your unmetered using four thousand gallons, that's what people use as a typical number of what you use a month. So somebody with a typical home, with an unmetered home pays about forty-four, thirty, forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents a month. If it's metered, you'd only pay thirty-three dollars. So they need to kind of get those so it would be more accurate and more equal. And that's why the ten percent versus the three percent. So next thing is what does that do to you next year, for instance? Next year, you're talking about a dollar thirty-three cents increase for unmetered and about three dollars and thirty-one cents per month metered. And that, and that increase is shown there. And now I'll show you a little bit on why. Your unmetered rate is above average comparing similar communities. So when we compared ten, ten or so communities, you were not, not at the top, but in the above-average part of it. Your metered rate is right about average or a little below. So when we raise you at three and then the, the metered at ten, it starts to average out to get closer to where you want to be. Your industrial rate comparison, real hard to do because you only have three. Depending on bigger communities that have a lot more, they do it equal. But I would say you're, you're fairly close to being about average for industrial rate. Capital expenditures, fiscal year nineteen through twenty-three, you have, you have expenditures and I'll show you that you, you plan on spending of about four point two million dollars. And that's on projects that are in the books, more or less, that you have to do. Then you have this Locust Street sewer separation at about six point eight million that you've already got an SRF loan for. And then you talked about doing an SRF loan for three point five million dollars for the next few years. What was that? Okay, and I thought, I think the intent?
What, James?
It's, that FY, that three and a half million dollar loan, we, we've kind of estimated out about three and a half million dollars.
Should be per, per year. That's what I'm, yes, I'm sorry.
Additional, above the six point six?
Yes. Above that.
Or six point eight?
And it should be three point five per year.
That's what we've tried to try, tried to model on here. That is, and, and to remember the, the work that was estimated in the H.R. Green Study. If we are to do that within a timeframe that?
Right.
That we have on hand to, to work within, we'd have to spend a hundred million in the next eight years.
I've got that coming up a little bit. It's in there, but I, I didn't get, but, but he's right. You're going to see. This is what's in here now. That three point five million dollars per year was to start doing sanitary sewer separation. It will never make what you need. Your needs are way higher than that.
You got some good news for us today?
I do, I do. It's coming, it's coming. I got a, you know, a normal guy.
I'm waiting on you, my friend. I'm waiting on you.
All right, I didn't want to bore you, but these are all the projects that you have that are funded. And there are a lot of, a lot of projects, wastewater treatment plant projects, things that you're already doing, master collection system, you know, similar, typical prob- problems to operate, maintain your existing system. This one's, now you start to say more bad news. What's not included on the list? Sewer separations for the administrative order, except for Locust Street, a lot of it's not included. A lot of that eighty million dollars isn't included. The nutrient reduction at the wastewater treatment plant wasn't included. Projects, and then the, then the eight point million, eight point four million of other projects are all on what we called a wish list.
And as you talk about that wish list, you had a discussion with Don about where in our system do we have things that we haven't been prioritizing and, and need to get to? And this is his off, kind of an off-the-cuff list. Would that be kind of accurate, Don?
Yep.
Yep. So this doesn't really even take a look at your system-wide lift stations, system-wide sewer pipes and the needs we have there for replacements. So it's, the wish list would really, if you're going to be accurate, would be higher than this.
And the next slide starts to get where Jim's talking about. Where are we at with the administrative order? Since nineteen ninety, you've been working on it. But the consent order wants you to have, comply by two thousand twenty-eight and it looks to be eighty-plus billion dollars by two thousand twenty-eight to really make that thing, which is completely ver- impossible, hard to do, whatever words you want to use, to have full separations. You also have other needs and we're getting, what we're going to is integrated planning. So flood protection, you've got aging storm sewer, you just did a storm sewer utility. You've got your treatment plant, you've got new regulations, this nutrient system, this nutrient reduction, we'll be able to put it off, but it's coming. It's coming to other states, it's on both coasts already. And then you even have drinking water that your taxpayers are paying for. So what are some opportunities? Start to get to the potential good part of the, part of it. None of it's great. There is a regulatory opportunity. You've been selected by the EPA to, to do integrated planning. It allows for restructuring, it allows for sequencing of all your investments. It allows for a way to prioritize. It encourages green infrastructure, and I mean heavily encourages it. Burlington was selected as a pilot city in two thousand sixteen. Reduces the cost and may lengthen the timeline, and that's a big deal for you. How long can we, can we lengthen that timeline? Can we live within the three and a half million dollars that we've put into the budget now into this study? Can we live with that per year? It's going to be very difficult, but that's, that's some of the things. There's definitely going to be costs with it, but we think significantly less costs.
You say may lengthen. Isn't that a pretty good may lengthen?
That you, you, you still have to get the Department of Natural Resources to agree to lengthen that schedule.
It's not only lengthening it, it's altering the, the, the plan of?
Right now, it's signed into, it's signed by the DNR Director and signed by you, by your staff that says you will. So you do have to get it changed. I'm saying you may because we don't have it changed.
I don't remember signing that. You got the box that came in the receipt?
I do not. I do not. But it is something that, that we would have to deal with, one way or the other. I, I, I feel very strongly that you're going to be able to, to get it renegotiated. We've done it before, we've done it in, in Davenport, we've done it in Des Moines. City's hired a really good attorney to help us.
We've been quite cooperative here.
I think you have, yes. No, I'm not, I'm not trying to be negative. I really, I did not say will because may is probably the best word at this point. Ready? So next thing is the green infrastructure. You've seen some of this. This is the kind of thing that we're going to have to invest in. And, and you can't, you're not going to be able to go to them and say, we want to extend this out and we don't have the money, so quit bothering us. That's just not what they want to hear. But if you say, hey, we're going to spend three and a half million dollars a year doing these kind of projects and these projects are going to have water quality benefits. These water quality benefits is really what the DNR is after. It also, it will reduce, really, you have combined sewers. If you can reduce the storm water going into your combined sewers, that solves that goal. That starts to get to where they want to go. And like I said, a lot of these cities, I heard somebody mention Dubuque. Dubuque is heavy-duty into this. This is where the grant money is also right now. So we're, we're pushing that hard. So I just showed you some precedences. I don't want to keep you crazy on this. A lot of people have seen this kind of thing. This is one I wanted to show you because somebody mentioned Dubuque today. Dubuque, this is one where I think it was maybe seven, eight years ago, I was in front of their council talking to them about the same thing. Can we do this in the Millwork District? And pictures on the right are before and the one in the middle is completed. So those projects have been completed, they have been able to work with them on their administrative order. And this is what it looks like today. We think that beautification is going to be very helpful along with actually doing the water quality benefits along with reducing the amount of flow. Right now, today, go across your river, that river's up very high. If you get a rain tonight, you have to pump it. You have to pump it because your, 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 your storm system is, is needing to be pumped in the, in the downtown area. If you can reduce the amount of flow that goes to that, your pumping's less, your costs are less. And I think that's how the thing will work. This is America's, America's community's renderings. I believe terrible reading. I think that one's Washington Street. That one, that's Main Street, sorry. Main Street. And this, this is, this is stuff that wasn't done by us, but this is the kind of thing. You've got a Tiger Grant. We need, we think you need to go forward with this Tiger Grant. We need to prove to them that the Tiger Grant, the Boating Infrastructure Grant, as well as the flood mitigation, that we can marry that money together. Use some of your own money also, you're not going to get away without using any, and try to make this thing so it all works. So it's kind of complicated, but I think raising your rates is, is a good thing. When they came to Davenport and, and the state had a big, big meeting with Davenport early this year, the first thing they asked, we want to know you're raising your rates. That was the first thing they had asked. Are you doing your part? Are you raising your rates? And that was, that was part of the, part of the argument. So this is just more renderings of Main. And you can see it's kind of the same philosophy. How do you get rid of storm water? How do you separate the storm water? It's not the eighty to a hundred million dollar part, but it is, it is a, a sequence and you're trying to get to better water quality, you're trying to get to less water. And I think the DNR will buy on, buy into it. This one is, I mean, I believe this one is, and it's kind of the same.
Hey Leo, I got a question for you.
It's Washington.
So you talked about doing all of these improvements in order to create more impervious area.
Yes.
And spending three and a half million dollars a year. So if we, if we spend three and a half million dollars a year making these improvements?
Yeah.
Is that three and a half million going for these types of projects or is that sewer separation and these projects?
It's three and a half million allocated towards?
The sewer part.
Overall, the sewer-type projects. And you may have a portion that gets allocated towards this type of project. Within the, what Leo's talking about right now, the Main Street and Wat- and Jefferson Street corridor that we have the funding from Tiger, there's where you can get an al- and some spending done on those improvements as part of those projects that includes some, some green infrastructure. And we'll get credit for that as we go into negotiations with DNR. But that's something that we'll talk about then. You know, we need some help and some alleviation on this schedule because we can't need it. But we're doing some of these other things as well to try to help achieve what the long-term goal is that we're all trying to, to get to.
If we do more of this, if we, I understand the three and a half million, but if, if the greater portion, proportion of that is for these types of projects, will they still accept that? Would they allow you to dial back the actual separation itself?
I, I don't think so. I think they're going to, they're going to want to see separation. They're going to want to see some separation. But you could do it, a few more slides here. I did have some areas, areas that you have basement backups. Those are areas you want to get separated. People, those are projects that people would really, really want the city to do. So we're saying, let's focus, focus in these areas, but also let's look at the basement back areas. Look at any areas that you're having storm water problems now. Any areas on that riverfront, we know where we have pumping problems down there and we don't have a pump station permanent yet, so we know those are areas. The other thing that the attorneys like to talk about with, with this is getting some kind of a regulatory, the wording they use is so that you're not hanging out to dry. If you spend three and a half million dollars per year, are they going to come back in three years and say, that's not enough? So they want to somehow be able to get this thing tied down. So they want to somehow be able to get this thing tied down, and that's what we're in the process of right now. I know that Dustin's been over at the DNR, he's been talking to them and telling them what we're going to do, but we haven't, we haven't shown them a complete plan yet, and part of it was getting this, getting the rate study in, in place.
Part of it's a change in philosophy to the HR Green Study was on the idea of complete separation of that basin, and you're going to go with more of a presumptive-
Right.
-that still allows for some overflows to occur as long as you have them moderated?
If you can, if, there's certain rules, if you're a combined sewer city, there's certain rules, that as long as you stay within those rules, so many overflows per year, so much flow that goes out. If you stay within those rules, they pretty much let you stay as a combined sewer in theory. The regulatory rules of the road are a lot better if you can stay in that arena.
And the cost is less, so that's part of how we'll work to modify and, and work with them to say, "We're looking to spend about three and a half million dollars a year on the, this type of project," because we're able to reduce costs, but we're taking into account some of these other things. We're going to try to, I mean, the nutrient reduction is, is a major issue that is, that's a six million dollar project by itself.
Yes.
We'll, we'll look to see what we can do with some of the storm water bio retention type cells. How much can you do with that kind of stuff that gives us credit and helps us to reduce the, the magnitude of the work that we need for nutrient reduction at the plant? But this is something that will take, parts of it we can get worked through yet this fall with EPA-
Yes.
Or DNR. Parts of it are things that are going to take years to, to work through. I'd say the nutrient reduction is one that will take several years to work through.
Nutrient reduction is one, too. In Davenport, we, we had that, it was even bigger. It was a much higher number than six and a half billion because of the type of treatment plant differences. And what we, we argued very hard in Davenport is that they have so many sewer separations, theirs is a hundred million dollars plus of, and they're already separated, just of all of their overflows and all their problems was a hundred million plus. And we argued we should be focusing on that and not nutrient reduction. And they pretty much said, "We're going to make you do another study in five years, but for five years, keep moving the way you're moving." And I suspect we'll be able to get that. Will we be able to get them to say nutrient reduction's going away? The answer's no. You won't be able-
Actually Leo, I had a question on the nutrient reduction. I know that is, is a primary goal, a big driver. If we are not in compliance, are there fines or what happens if we're not?
Right now, they ask you to do a nutrient reduction strategy, and, and the, the state has a strategy, so they ask you to do a facility plan that told you, "Can you meet their regulations?" And you, and you can, you have a report that says, "Yeah, we could, but it would cost six or seven million dollars."
Plus 600,000 ongoing annual cost.
So, so what we're saying is we're not thinking that report should be submitted that way, and that we should be putting that in the bigger picture of the integrated planning. But we don't, they don't fine or anything like that. I don't think anybody in the state's been fined, fined for that. Majority of the state is still doing kind of the things Jim was saying, they're trying some of this trading. Maybe we'll do some upland bioreactor type projects that will reduce nitrogen, reduce phosphorus. We know as engineers, you're not going to quite get there. Happens to be one of Meredith's specialties, is doing some of those bioreactors. But the state's really likes the idea of doing them because it's moving in the right direction. It may not be moving as fast as they'd like. It's a lot easier to take it out at the end of the pipe sometimes, but they do like the idea of it.
To say that no one's been fined, part of that is, is that this has been something that's been an issue for the last seven to eight years that DNR's really started pushing this in their permits.
At most.
So it hasn't been a long timeframe, and everybody's been in compliance with whatever's been mandated at this point. So if somebody was not to stay in compliance, they would be subject to fines.
They'd be subject to them, right. They have not done it yet.
Leo, one question I've got is, does the state understand the amount of, of growth that they're stunting in communities, that they're putting this requirement on?
It's a good question. I, I, I think they do because I think they are very, very interested in the integrated planning. They are interested in it tremendously. They haven't, for some reason, cities haven't caught on to it. It's kind of new, but I do think they, I think they understand that this is big, big dollars, but I don't, I don't know, you know, the trouble with the DNR is there's a lot of different levels of the DNR. So even if the, the director understands, the people that are monitoring the permit that come and visit his plant or visit your public works department sometimes don't understand.
Yeah, and some of it, they're, and they're also subject to what EPA is, is mandating on them and are concerned because EPA really doesn't care.
I really do think you're in a fairly good spot, though. Being, being nominated as an integrated planning city, at first I was thinking, well, it doesn't bring you any money, at least in my, my experience. I haven't seen where that brings you money from the US EPA. I know. But having it designated does allow people like the DNR to say, "Well, they, they should be given this opportunity." And that opportunity is worth a lot of money to you. So we, we think the direction, we're extraordinarily confident that the DNR will buy into the direction. I mean, I think, Jim, you've had talks with Dustin, I don't think there's any, any real nervousness that they won't buy into that.
No.
In the event that they don't, and they require us to maintain the date that we've got, even though we know that that's a very low possibility, what's our expectation at that point?
That's a tough question. That's a tough question. I, I suspect you'd be in violation. I don't think you're, I, I don't think there's any way you'd get, you'd get separated that quickly, no matter what.
There's going to be a whole lot of people in violation, though. We wouldn't be by ourselves.
Yeah.
We've had, I think we've, we've had three or four extensions as time has gone by, and most of, a lot of those have just been with some dates within the order.
Yes.
But they'll-
Six months, year, a time type thing.
We've had a, we've had, four years we received a three-year extension. We'd gone in requesting more than that. Essentially, at the time, they said, you know, "We'll give you three years, but we need to see some hard numbers to justify why we would give you an extension beyond that."
But your rates are in the thirty, mid-thirty range. They'd want to see them closer to seventy-five dollars to eighty dollars a month. That's the kind of range they'd be looking at if they did-
For the sewer?
Yes, sir.
Before they start to-
Right.
EPA says you can afford 2% of median family income.
Right.
And that's, I don't know exactly what that is, but I think that's somewhere in a ninety-dollar range.
So that, that's where they'd be going before they'd want to back off. But, but I don't, I don't want to scare people, I don't think that's the direction we're going.
No, I understand.
Very confident in integrated planning.
Just wanted to know.
We've done, we've done the integrated planning in, in, in Davenport and in Dubuque without, without having the integrated planning kind of as, as a firm, as a guideline, but we've done the same process, the same procedures, and the DNR's pretty much let us, let us go forward.
So we've been raising rates 3% annually. We've had the, the period of time where it was 9% annual rate increases. I don't know where it was that our rate structure for metered versus unmetered got so out of whack. But over the course of the last couple of years, we've had, two years, not this summer, last summer we raised the metered 7% while we did the 3% on the non-metered. This year, we raised 9% while we did the 3% on the non-metered. So as we're looking at the future, what you're discussing is, is a 10% annual rate increase there to get it to where they're equal across the system over five years.
For metered?
For metered.
Yeah.
3% non-metered.
So metered and non-metered for the same gallonage essentially would be the same price. The same, the same bill.
No one wants to hear that. It's, we are above average rates on the, the non-metered.
Yes.
And we're going to continue to be that. We're certainly not the highest. We're not even the highest in this region.
Meredith, Meredith shows a table in the report that shows if you go out five years, what are other people's rates, and it makes you look much higher. But I can tell you, because I'm city engineer for Leclerc, I'm city engineer for West Liberty, and they're all in the same boat. They're going to be raising their rates. When she goes and looks on their website, or she calls and asks a clerk, they're not going to be able to tell her what the real deal is. So that's why I stayed with, "What are, what are the rates right now? What are they going to be next year?" Because in five years, people are in the same boat as you are. They are raising their rates. There's not a single soul in the state, State Iowa that's not, not looking at raising That's the bad news. Still wait, still waiting on the good news.
Something that I thought would probably, I don't know how much value it has with, with DNR as we go to them, but we've been doing annual rate increases. I don't know if there's some value to do in a resolution, or we do, just do the five-year rate increase and just get it in place, the scheduled rate increase for each year. I don't know if that's something-
I, I don't think that would hurt any. I, I know that's what a lot of others have been doing, is getting that rate increase for five years and then saying, "We'll go back and look at it in five years."
And part of that is-
We're going to do it, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
In part, I mean, it's, it's a trend that we've been on.
What would that be then at this point?
3% annually for the non-metered, 10% for the metered.
Okay. I thought you were talking about doing it all.
Well, what he's saying is, do you want, instead of do it for one year, you want to do a resolution that says for five years?
Okay.
So that you have it set, it just automatically increases for, for each of those five years. When, when we go in and talk about saying that we do plan on doing, doing this, we're going to be raising our rates.
Yes.
It helps us to be able to talk with DNR, and they have a little bit more level of comfort that we're going to follow through with what we're saying.
Now, you're going to have a study that has a model that shows, "Here's what we're doing," and now there's a resolution that shows for five years-
That makes sense.
The city's committed.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think it does make sense.
True.
Leo?
You want me to sit down? I'm sorry.
Glad to see you come, I'm glad to see you leave. I'm just glad to see you, buddy.
Thank you.
All right. I'm glad to see you because you brought Meredith with you this time. She's better looking than you, no offense. No offense, but anyway, sorry. You guys got, okay. Well, let's have the distinguished-looking gentleman sitting next to Chuck. We'll have you come up next, if you don't mind. Tama Building, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I have a handout.
Please do, please do.
Thank you. Pass one on, here you go, buddy.
Thank you, sir. I'm ready for this, bros.
Yep.
I am Doug Wells, owner of the Tama Building, and, which has been challenging the last two months certainly. Anyway, I wanted to give you an update. The, the date of the fire was August 4th, and the following Monday after the fire, Grinnell Mutual, who was our insurance carrier, secured the site and controlled the access to the site. They gave it back to us on September 23rd, so I haven't been able to do anything on the site, and even touring the building was very limited. We really couldn't go where we wanted to go. But on, on Friday, the 23rd, they indicated, they said, "You have the property back." And then the following week, we had our engineers come down and make assessments, and then our, our plans are to rebuild, and the, so we began working with two structural engineering firms regarding designing shoring, and that is, that is moving along according to a schedule I gave to Eric. I had meetings today. We've sort of elevated that activity today. I've engaged Estes Construction in Davenport to work with us and, and do the shoring. They are bringing in shoring installation. We're talking to three different providers, but one is, is from Chicago. They specialize in that situation where they erect a structural scaffold that is six feet deep on the exterior of the building, which would be all along Jefferson Street and all along Third Street. And then that scaffolding attaches to the building, and then it has outriggers that come out further, and then those stabilize the exterior wall. And this diagram I gave you, in the, at the bottom of the page, there's this pink safety zone around the, the building, and that is what the plumbary design has indicated as far as how far out from the face of the building we need to, to come. And as of today at our meeting this morning, the design, it was verified, we need to be five feet beyond the curb line, and it is the curb line at the corner of Jefferson and, and Third Street. And that is getting fine-tuned as that system is finalized more. We hope to pull it back in tighter. But in, kind of in summary, it takes the parking spaces that are in front of the building now, but opens the streets up. And we know very much it's important to, you know, get the site cleaned up and get the streets opened up. Wednesday morning in two days, we have a crew of two laborers starting to clean up the sidewalk in the street where it is safe, and the area that is the most dangerous is this area at the corner where these red bars are. Those are shoring pieces, and we're going to supervise them closely and clean up that area as much as, as much as we can. There's a possibility of the building collapsing right at that, that portion, and we've been monitoring it and measuring it with a laser measuring device. We know the wall has come out five inches in that southeast corner on the south face where the floor collapsed down five, five stories. The, so we have two buildings, the Tama Building and the C and E Building, and the, the front of the C and E Buildings is stable, and the alley is not, and there'll be more shoring design on that, that piece. That piece where the debris has collapsed into the alley is the most challenging part right now, today, and the engineering firms that were working on it, were working on solutions to get it tied back to the building, or take more of the wall down, so we're working to get the alley opened, open back up. When I say it's the most challenging, that doesn't mean it'll be done any slower than the rest of it. So the steps are to clean up the street, empty the storage containers out, get the storage containers taken away, and then get the shoring installed, get the alley cleaned up, and at that point, they would come into the building and construct the corner back. This is a southeast corner. It's about a 20 by 20-foot bay on each floor. They would construct that back, and then that stabilizes the, the exterior, and then the excavation equipment would remove all the debris that's inside the, inside the building. An additional challenge we have is- An additional challenge we have is the vibration of moving the debris inside of the building is the most dangerous thing we could do right now, and they've monitored that. But I feel the design team has those parts and pieces put together. So in about two weeks, we feel the, I'm going to call it the emergency shoring piece, will be complete. I felt at our meeting this morning in Davenport, everyone was on the page and we knew where we were going on it. And then that work can happen. And what is nice about using a shoring contractor, there are no materials to buy. That's what they do. And for instance, if you're in downtown Chicago and a building's being remodeled, you're walking through a tunnel on the sidewalk, and this is the same company who does a lot of that. They make the public right away safe for work. So that is going on. My, the final details of our claim with Grinnell Mutual are due Friday, and we basically have all the components put together and are just fine-tuning that a little bit. Our policy does cover replacement cost of the building. It covers the tax credits that made the building possible, and loss of income, and a little bit for code updates, and a little bit for cleanup. So it is, we believe, adequately insured. And Grinnell Mutual's been most cooperative in every sense. And I don't have any information regarding the cause and origin of the fire. Nothing's been forward on to us, so we don't know. But it is, I'm optimistic to rebuild and push it forward, and we very much want to get the site cleaned up.
Yes, we do.
Yeah. And I know everyone does. We do wish we could have received it sooner, and, but they were involved with their investigation, and that was, you know, one of the rights in their policies. And I, with your permission, I would like to come back in a few weeks or a month with an updated report. But Wednesday, you'll see the cleanup starting.
Good deal. I think for me, it's really, I would love to have you come back and give an update. More importantly, I want to make sure that there's a good avenue of communication between yourself and the people that have interests in downtown, specifically shop owners and residents. I know there's a lot of concern there, and I want to make sure that there's a good avenue of dialogue where they have questions that they can ask them and that they're answered and that you're keeping them up to date, especially on that timeline. The only question that I have for you, well, I have a couple. First off, what's a reasonable expectation to have the site cleaned up and all the shoring in place? What would that date look like?
The, they felt they could get what we're calling the emergency shoring done in four weeks. However, the, we want to have all the sidewalk and the site cleaned up prior to that.
Two weeks from Wednesday, is that?
You just said two weeks for the emergency shoring, which would make it October 24th.
So we're having the site cleaned up in two weeks, and then they're starting to install the shoring in two weeks.
In two weeks, and that takes two weeks to install.
That takes two weeks, yeah.
So four weeks from now, a month from now, the entire exterior of the site and the emergency shoring should be in place?
Yes, yes.
So what is your expectation for a completion of the reconstruction?
Okay. We've, with Estes Construction, put together a schedule, and we have the emergency shoring and the cleanup for four weeks. Then we have interior construction in the building to get the corner stabilized. And once that is done, that is another two months. And then once that is done, the debris removal would happen.
How long is that expected to take?
We have several bids, and they range from two weeks to six weeks. And the most qualified contractor, they were about three and a half weeks for that portion. And we have a very detailed schedule of all this activity that is complete, that I'd be happy to get to you right away.
Yeah, absolutely.
I really appreciate that.
That'd be good.
So at a worst-case scenario, we're talking about all shoring being done and all of the debris being cleaned up, no later than probably the end of January, middle of February?
Yes. That's a little longer than our schedule. We're a little ahead of that. The, so the timing of the project is to, once the block that's standing of the Tama Building on the corner, that portion would be completed first. The reconstruction of the C and E Building would be second. And then the north wing that fell down of the Tama Building would be third. And by December 23rd in our schedule, we have blocks one and two complete.
Of December 23rd of 19, blocks one and two would be finished?
Of 2019.
Okay.
And then by April 4th is the date on, of 2020, on the remaining piece of the Tama Building.
Hey Doug, I have a question. I know time is of the essence, and a lot of people's livelihoods are at stake in getting this rebuilt. We could get into severe weather. Is that going to impair the process?
Actually, it doesn't. We experience with the cold weather easier management of water.
Okay.
And it, water, when it rains now, it drains to the basement, and the basement has several floor drains that are new and open, and they're working fine. And we don't anticipate those freezing.
Okay, that's good. I know you said initially you're starting out with two laborers. Is that for safety reasons? You can't put a big crew of people in there? I may hear two people, and I think, ooh, that's going to take a long time. I'm wondering, why not four, why not six?
More are available. The first thing we're going to do is get, under full-time supervision, is get the dangerous area cleared out.
I figured it was for safety reasons, why you can't put a slug of people there immediately?
Yes, very much so.
I've got to hold on, I got to slip out, I'm going to let you guys handle it. But I just want to, I want to say this to you before I get out. This, obviously you know this, that building, which is, you know, I'm not blaming you for the fire, but because of what happened, I mean, it's really, really affecting the downtown. I mean, it's in so many different ways. You know, people are really wanting to know how close you're going to be able to ride to that timeline. And even with reconstruction, you know, that's going to still, there's other businesses that are suffering. So I mean, I'm hoping as we move forward that this is going to go as smoothly as possible and that we can stay really close to these timelines. What if there's something comes up where you're not able to make the timelines? Because that's going to get into, it's going to get into other people's business. I'm saying, what are you prepared to do if that doesn't happen?
The, well, the financing and the components of the financing rely on these three components, big done in tranches and completed at that timeframe, and we just have to be sure that happens. One thing we are planning on doing is hiring Estes Construction, is being the construction manager, to manage that full-time, and they're very aware of the importance of that. The building has been destroyed enough, and is, we can see, we don't anticipate big surprises. We can see all the pieces. We saw it all go together. We know what's in there. We have, one of the biggest challenges we had in the project was availability of labor, of carpentry, rough framing and carpentry. We feel we have that solved with a much larger crew than we ever had. And I think that would be the most significant things. We're planning on keeping our same mechanical and electrical contractors, and they're aware of the schedule, and they're have.
And I hear you there. It's just that my experience and that, just in past experiences.
Oh, sure.
You know, I'm just, I'm really concerned, and it's like I don't want us putting us in a situation where we're expecting to have some things done and then it's delayed another week, or it's delayed two weeks, because that puts us in a tough situation. So, and I don't want to be in that situation. Do we have anything to protect us? James?
Eric, do we have a demo reserve fund yet?
And that's what you're confirming, the proof of loss that's due to Grinnell by Friday?
Right.
That's what's needed for the city to receive our demo reserve?
Right. Until then, for us to do anything doesn't, I mean, we have full liability and don't have anything to go back on. But one of the things that we have to do, I think at this point, is from a staff perspective, is we can't authorize or allow you to have any plans moving forward until you get us to where we're able to have that demo reserve fund.
Right, right.
So that's a key thing.
And we hold that for six months, right?
Then that, we have six months to be able to use that and take care of any demo that's necessary if it's not done.
So that would make March 23rd, 2019.
It doesn't begin until he signs documents.
Oh, so it's six months from.
When can we expect?
That's what we're waiting for.
So essentially, Mr. Wells has got six months to have the site braced, cleaned up, and reconstruction started.
If you're going off of that demo reserve fund. Something that.
Eric, have you guys worked through doing anything for placarding the building to start a timeframe too?
We're waiting on that demo reserve to, just the formality process.
So we'll go through a process of also placarding the building as unsafe and putting us in position to be able to do work if you're not moving forward with the project. Now, I guess part of the concern or question that we would all have is how much flexibility is there in this process? From a staff perspective, what do you guys see or have recommendations? Or are you looking to this for recommendations? How aggressive you are in working with Mr. Wells on hitting timeframes? Are you?
We look for direction on that, yeah.
So that's where they need some direction from you all. And how do we work in a way that makes sure that we're working well with a developer who's trying to get his building redeveloped while you're also working with building owners and business owners who are trying to see.
There's a lot of downtown frustrated businesses.
Well, I think my willingness to work with the developer is much greater if the area and the site is cleaned up to a point where the downtown businesses are being less affected. That's, if he can give us a hard and fast date, I will have it opened and cleaned up, and they will be able to function as a business. Tonight, that's great. I mean, if you say, listen, January 15th, you said you got a little bit of a timeline there, so it's January 15th. If January 15th is the day that I can say to others, listen, Mr. Wells has said he will have it cleaned up, it will be open, everything will be in place to a point where downtown businesses can have people park, drive down their street, walk into their shop, and purchase things, then that's really what I'm looking for at this point.
That's what the downtown is looking for.
Yeah, if it takes you an extra couple of months in order to complete your project to have occupancy in there, I'm fine with that, as long as the effects to downtown business owners is being minimalized. And that can really only be done once the building, by the building being cleaned up and braced. So.
I hope it's sooner than January 15th. We've got Christmas season coming up here.
Yeah, there's.
Well, you said for the outside debris to be done and the bracing to be done. So that tells me that November 8th, give or take, that for the most part, most businesses in the downtown area should be able to get back to some level of normalcy with traffic and with parking and pedestrian traffic that they had before the fire occurred. Obviously, it won't be as if the building was open. But that's really what I'm looking for at this point. I want to make sure that going into the holiday season, and right, I mean, I'd love for it to be done tomorrow, but going into the holiday season, that they're going to be able to function as a business.
The, of the various things I talked about, the exterior shoring and the cleanup, the exterior shoring's needed for public safety. And then, once that is complete, the, you know, the cleanup happens much faster. We're able to bring a lot more people in at that point.
Okay.
And then, we're going to know and have the shoring provider under contract very soon, and then that'll have the dates and the timelines in it. Additionally, in our discussions with them, they're used to moving fast because they realize it's an emergency.
So, I mean, November 12th is a work session. As long as nobody else opposes, I'd really like to have you come back. That way, by that time, we should have completed a lot of what we've discussed tonight.
I still.
I would like, actually, to have him come back more often, more frequently.
Yeah, I think the more communication, the better.
Until everything is more.
You want him back here before, like the 29th?
On the 29th.
Come back every week, as far as I'm concerned. But James, I still want to get, I still want to get direction from staff on how we move forward to protect ourselves and make sure that we've got.
We can't until.
We're waiting for the reserve funds, but the first step after that, and I think that you've had that communicated from downstairs, they want to make sure that we protect our timeline interests and go through the placarding of the structure. But the first date that you have from Mr. Wells has been about two weeks for getting the street cleaned up. Two weeks is another work session. You should have a pretty good idea, how close is he getting to hitting that timeline for that piece? And that can give you an idea, how much flexibility are you wanting to provide, or how aggressive are you wanting to be from a city perspective too?
Two weeks.
Well, I think.
Just as you move on and understand what's going on.
From my vantage point, I guess I would say yes. We want the city staff to stay on it and make sure that it's done. I thank you for taking it on in the first place, and I thank you for looking at rebuilding it now rather than just blockading it. I'd hate to see us as a city all of a sudden get real short-sighted on this thing.
Oh, yeah.
Right? I mean, we're all excited, it was almost ready to open. We were overjoyed about it, and then we had the tragedy of the fire. So as long as you're making the marks, you're going to have support here as far as I'm concerned. If you're not making the marks, then we're going to have to have some tough conversations. But I think the timeline you're laying out, it seems like it's doable. You seem confident of it, and we'll have staff keep track.
It seems, I mean, I know, I know, sitting here today, it's tough, but it seems rather reasonable, given the amount of stuff that needs to happen. If you can get that building open by April, completed by April of 2020, I'll be impressed.
And the other thing is, you know, thankfully, you have a good, it was insured properly, so the likelihood there is he will have the funds to get it done. So the onus will be on you, sir, to get to stay on timeline, but I don't see us standing in the way of making that happen, so.
Isn't the 29th a meeting?
No, one, two, three, four, five. Four, right?
It's the final.
We have an off week, is what I'm saying.
Oh.
The 22nd is an off. So work session on the 29th. Okay. Yeah, so I would like you to come back on the 29th to give us another good update or informative.
I'd be happy to do that. And then I wanted to touch on the reserve and the contracts. So on Friday, we turned in our claim, and right when we turn that on, Grinnell Mutual gives us a letter, then we write the letter to the city. And so that all, that all occurs within a few days after that, and then that gets the six-month time period.
Clock going.
Yeah, going on that.
Like Andy said, you're going to come back on the 29th. Until it's cleaned up. Until it's cleaned up and braced and people can, like I said, operate some level of normalcy, I would expect for this council to be fairly aggressive with trying to make sure that that site's cleaned up and that you guys are maintaining a timeline.
Sure.
And I echo what John said. I do appreciate the fact that you're rebuilding it, but I still have to maintain my concern with the people that are down there in the downtown area.
Sure, sure. We understand that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns on that one? Okay, so now are we going to go down the regular?
Start from back track.
Okay. I know, but now we're going to go back and, all right, so first we have a mayor's award and then we have a public hearing, sale of property located south of the property locally known as 715 Shaka Khan Drive, City of Burlington, Iowa with conditions.
This is tied to the couple items we had last week with the sewer to serve the Parkview Care Site and then the easement for that as well. In exchange for the easement, we had noted in that resolution that we'd be transferring property here, which is highlighted in black. Doesn't serve a purpose for the larger Parkview Care Site. It's kind of carved out of their backyard anyway and in lieu of payment for the easement, this property was noted as being considered for sale for that easement. So that's what's being brought forward is sale to the owners of 726 Black Hawk for $1 in consideration of the easement, which we paid them $1 for as well. So services the property that they own and also, I guess, in consideration of that easement that was necessary for sanitary sewer to our property.
Any questions?
No questions.
Next public hearing, consideration of an ordinance amending section 58.19 to motorized vehicles of chapter 58 noise control of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
Yeah, this was brought up to, at the request of a citizen to have an engine braking ordinance or a jake brake ordinance in town. And I did some research. Most of them are very similar and as I believe you may have a copy of it, it's pretty simple, cut and dried and and I feel it's enforceable if need be, but there'll be some, I guess, some learning curve there at the beginning to have the signs posted and hopefully they'll just comply without any enforcement.
Yeah. Thank you very much. Any other questions or concerns?
Ah, it seems reasonable.
Okay. Next we have up for final adoption of an ordinance amending section 100.6 2. D determination of stormwater utility fee right of way of chapter 100, stormwater management and drainage systems utility of the City of Burlington Municipal Code.
This is amendment of the section that we put in place July 1 and essentially adds a public airport runway right of way and the taxiway right of way to exempt property similar to what public highways, roads, alleys and railroad rightways.
Okay. Any questions?
We've covered it several times.
Okay, looks good. And then we have our consent. Yep, so we have nuisance abatements. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that one? And actually have a resolution approving final acceptance and release of retention monies for the 2017 agency, agency street widening project west end. Nick?
This resolution here would actually, there's no final payment. All the payments have been requested. It would release retention monies of $46,133. This project is, its project in the scope of RISE and the DOT is not actually completed, but with the work being done, bid out by this contractor is. That's the reason why you see it close out for this project. This is a RISE project combined with West Burlington. The total project funds was 2.1 million as, as built costs as today are at 1.8 million. So we still have some remaining funds. I think engineering still probably has to come out of there as well. So I think the estimate on the, the traffic lights was in the 25 to $30,000 bracket. And so I don't know when we'll get those bids back specifically, but it'll probably be done before winter time is my hope. So.
Any questions, Nick? Next we have a resolution authorizing City of Burlington to financially support the Great River Housing Trust Fund for fiscal year 2020 and 2021, supporting the 2019 grant application to the state housing trust fund.
This is following up from the request that was made at a previous work session. I think Mike.
Norris.
Mike Norris did that. We've done this in the past. It's fairly similar. Most, a lot of the grants that they go after that are being done in the City of Burlington have some match requirements and any chance we have to match off of those, we try to get it accomplished. We use a portion of the funds that we set aside into the housing demo. It's 20,000 a year that we put in, into that. So we're using a portion of what we're, we put into that fund to go into doing the match on this.
Any questions? Next we have a resolution approving an operating agreement for placement of apparatus for EMS response.
I'm not sure if you just want to ask questions or you just want to discuss what we had, I gave you on the packet the other day.
Yeah.
Mainly it started out as a kind of a cold call. We just stopped in to see what they would say and the guy was quite open to it. So the rental agreement part of it is something that I put together. Patrick has seen it. And if it was our property, it would be a lot more detailed. Since it's not our property and we're technically the tenant and the only thing they're asking for is possibly utilities and right now they can't even really tell us what that might be. But for the space that we're going to be in, I look to see that it's fairly minimal. So.
Is it secure from?
Yes.
The rest of the facility?
From the rest of the facility, there is a connection point in the garage area. We don't anticipate a major problem with that and neither do they. Parking light wise, there is not a locked gate per se when it comes down to where we would be responding out of.
Well, but if our guys go out for a call and they've got personal material there.
It's the, they are open to us putting a keyed lock, city keyed lock on the actual facility itself.
Okay.
So they, they'll have, they'll have two keys, probably one for their maintenance individual and one to have a backup maybe in the, in the office.
And then are they responsible for clearing the parking lot and area, like for snow and things like that to provide access?
As of right now, that's, that's one of the details that really hasn't been talked about much, but I'm assuming that they'd be more than willing to work with us. If nothing else, we'll figure out a way to do it ourselves.
Okay.
So parking is not going to be a problem because there's ample spots. They're close.
About the parking lot. So there is a clear lane for you guys to get out where you're not going to have to worry about negotiating through other. When I was looking at the map, there's a clear lane.
If you look at the map area where, if I can, I don't know which one you're looking at here. If you're looking at it, looking towards the west.
I looked at it before.
Okay. If you're looking at it towards the west, you're actually going to be having to go, you'll be coming out of their building. You'll make a 90, go north and then take that where the old guard shack is.
Right.
And then connect it on Broadway. So there shouldn't really be anything in the way.
Sure. Yeah, it's right there. Okay.
Any other questions?
I commend you guys for thinking outside the box, coming up with a solution to a problem.
What a great call. Yeah.
Most impressed.
We'll end up creating an operationally, we'll create new accounting structure to recognize a third ambulance bay or location. I don't know exactly what the title of that is, but we want to get it within our expense code so that the costs that we have associated with it, we can track and and, you know, say you're cognizant, this is what this area is actually costing us over time.
If anything that gets, that we would be purchasing as through the department budget will be designated somehow on my sheets of where it goes, what's been out there. So.
Very good. Thank you very much.
No.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, now down to some discussion items. City Council chambers?
Protest is getting ready.
I know, a very large.
Well, a few of you, yeah, were gone last time. So we continued this discussion tonight. And I think the memo was in the packet, right, this time? I hope it was. I did not double. Okay, it was in there again. Okay. Just, the memo just explains, you know, you guys had a goal to kind of do an assessment of the city council chambers. We looked at three vendors who specialized in conference room designs and we had them come in, do measurements, just kind of think outside the box. What could we do to improve this room, the quality and so the next step would be to take the ideas that, the proposals that they have and put together an RFP and go back out for bid and then we'd see who would have the lowest bid. We do have $50,000 allocated for this in our FY 19 budget from our information technology section. So basically, all the proposals had new cameras. We'll see equality, an increase in quality on the streaming. We are working with media com to see how we could get that increased. We're not sure how much that would cost and if that would fit in the budget, but anybody doing the streaming would see increased, increased quality. They have, we like the idea of getting a brand new projector and the screen. We would reuse the audio. They all thought that was fine. They do have some, you know, new equipment that would be installed to make the operation of this simpler. So hopefully then we won't have as many problems with switchers or anything that goes down and Eric and I don't know how to fix it. So to streamline it would make it easier. So what I wanted you guys to decide, I have three proposals. One of the proposals had suggested that we put 40, 70 inch TVs instead of the projector and screen. So Rich had made this. That's 70 inches all the way around, not just the TV, to just give you guys an eyeball of what that would look like. So two would be on this side, you know, facing this way and then one facing that way. And then the other two would be over here. That's one of the suggestions. Proposal two would be retain this, this is 108 inches here, get the new projector. The new projector would fill the screen, would look much better. It would be brighter. And then the third proposal would be to retain the screen and then maybe put one or two of these TVs over there so that, you know, the audience on this side could maybe have a better, a better view or even Jim wouldn't have to turn around and look. He could do it over there. So basically that's a combination of proposal one and two. You getting next range, Jim? So we wanted to see, I know we kind of discussed last time, it seemed like the consensus was from the three that were here, you like to keep the projector. I like the large size. Okay.
Me too. I'm not a giant fan of putting that over there in front of the door, but I did think about it for a while. What if we were to move those more to the middle of the room? And have one, one facing the council or Jim and this way and then one facing the other way.
You mean like right where Nick said?
Yeah, and just put them at an angle kind of and.
Yeah, I mean, they would come down.
Move them a little bit closer. Yeah, something along those lines.
Pivot, just pivot.
Kind of where that light is, where this spotlight is that's never used.
Well, up this way you mean?
Yeah. Move forward and.
Yeah, it almost has to be because otherwise those folks would be like this trying to look at us.
Yeah, so if we moved it, that way.
So the screen would be facing this way or that would?
We talked about putting two in. So one facing us and then one facing the people that sit on the other side of the room.
You've got to keep it out of the camera.
Although I probably. Yeah, it would have to go out of the camera view.
And that one too.
I don't think it would be in the camera, but I don't know.
That camera is going to pick up the City of Burlington. So, I mean, just say, do they have to have it in a location that?
Yeah.
Well, and the camera now, this angle, you know, with that camera head.
It may be over it.
We would zoom more in though. So maybe you could get past the TV too. And the suggestion would be to have these on swivels, like we could move them. So if we had other activities.
That would make sense.
I'm just not a fan of having them.
Back up over there. Yeah. And we could see that. Like I said, it's going to have to come down and.
Sometimes it's hard enough to see the, you know, depending on the graph, you know, there's.
Little tiny maps.
Sometimes little tiny maps and little tiny figures and so you can't see it. So I definitely want to keep the screen.
Okay.
And then, you know, you know, if we have to, I guess we could, you know, we could move council photos too. If you needed to put them on the wall, if you didn't like them above the door.
Yeah.
Move council photos this next time anyway.
What about one in the middle of the room coming down? Or is that definitely will block the camera?
I don't.
It's a good thing, blocking the cameras.
I always think that's better than trying to put it above the door, to be honest, rather than you put one there and one there.
Yeah, I, like I said, I'm not a fan of putting them in front of the door. If you put them on the wall, fine. If we put them up here, that's fine.
Audience over here could see.
Yeah, so. But I assume whichever company you give the RFP to will have some ideas on that as far as what might be the best.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and we can look at the pros and cons for putting them there or, you know, maybe logistically is it, could we do it there? So.
Yeah.
But you want to keep this, go to bid with the new projector. Okay. And then look at getting maybe two.
Two.
Two over here for that side of the room.
And then did you say that you're updating the sound equipment?
No.
Or not doing that?
No, that wasn't suggested. We did that back in 2012 and like I said, they looked at all our equipment. They thought that was fine. So.
I feel like it just has to do with the streaming, really the audio quality because.
You mean the visual, visual quality?
No, because I mean, if it doesn't stream well, it breaks up and things like that. So I think it just has to do with that.
Okay, well, we'll get together the RFP based on what we have so far. And then basically, once we get the three bids back or however many bids we get, then it'll come to council for approval with the final.
Okay.
What we're going to do.
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and then we also have an appointment. Two appointments. One for the animal hearing board, doing a reappointment of Angela Beard and for the Flint Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee. Let's see, Sally Box would like to be reappointed as well. Any issues with the two appointments? And then we also have a future discussion item for the minority recruitment. I don't know who, we're just talking about later.
Yeah, that's, it got picked up off of my notes. And it's, it's been something that has been asked for over, over time and it has been a while since it's been talked about. So it did make sense that we start get this back up in front of, in front of y'all to just review what, what has been done over the course of the last six to 12 months.
We will discuss it in the future.
Do we need to set a date?
No.
That'll be, that'll, that'll be possibly this next one. It kind of depends sometimes on what other topics.
The 29th.
We have coming on.
Okay. Anyone else have anything? Anyone in the back have some good news to share? Only good news right now. We're not accepting any. We're not accepting any negative.
Oh, I have good news. I'll say that for the last.
Yes, please.
Um, as you.
Did Nebraska win this weekend?
Anyway.
Good news for, they scored. They scored this weekend.
They did score this weekend. That's good news.
They kept them to three points in the first quarter.
They did.
That's huge. That's like winning the game.
I was in Wisconsin and I'll tell you that people in Wisconsin were not happy.
Good. I like it.
Alright, bad news.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off. I wanted to talk about good things.
I take a lot of, a lot of stuff for the Husker thing. It's alright. They'll eventually win someday. As you may have noticed, the river level is coming up. They updated it this afternoon to 21 feet, I think hitting its crest on Sunday. We left the HESCO barriers up from the previous time, two and a half weeks ago was actually turned out to be a good decision. Didn't have to do any replacement of that. We did insert the panels in the open areas, the walkout areas on the permanent flood wall. So we are secure on the, on the wall portion until we get to if we hit above 22, we're going to have to consider putting them on top of the wall. But tomorrow we will be taking out some of the rock baffleding in the, in the railroad tracks and putting some clay in there and crossing the tracks at a point where we'll talk with them in the morning. Then we also have to ring around the Hawkeye hole that we have. Unfortunately, that water will equalize as the river level comes up and at 21 foot, that puts water out of that hole. So we have to ring around it. Not ideal to have to ring around something that shouldn't be open typically, but unfortunately, that's what we have. unfortunately, that's what we have, and then the, the middle parking lot between this auditorium, I call it the middle, the Southern Auditorium parking lot is typically what it's called. That will likely be closed off as we put HESCO barriers further down the south side of that parking lot into kind of almost the intersection of front and market, so that the access will be closed off just because of all the things going on in there. Good news, Mount Pleasant Street Bridge demolition continued last week. I know that there was, there was a lot of frustration of, of delay and lack of planning on the city's part, but everything came together last week from BNSF's approval to the contractor for the demolition, so they're actually went by this today, and they're continuing to demo on it, so. And Mount Pleasant Street asphalt should get lifts of asphalt next week. I think they had planned on trying to pour concrete patches back today and tomorrow, but with the rain and the forecast, I think they got a little delayed in doing that, so. Agency street switched, and so there's more concrete going there. I think you've probably seen some crazy traffic control at times. We've had a little bit of an issue trying to get the contractor wrangled up on proper traffic control on one of our busiest streets in town, but we're moving forward with that, so.
Alright, do we have any other wonderful news?
City Day in the Park this Saturday, from one to three at Dankert Park Pool. We'll have a lot of events free, open to the public. Face painting, putt puff goodies, hay rack rides, departments will have various items there to display kind of what we do as a city as well, so encourage everyone to come out. It's been kind of growing and successful the last few years, so.
Are you still doing the color run type, type thing?
No, no run this year, yep, so. Again, Saturday, October thirteenth, one to three, Dankert Park, near the pool and dog park area, so come out and enjoy that, bring your family. One other thing, kind of the third time we've done this, the trash drop-off, looking at Thursday, October twenty-fifth, ten to six, at the South Auditorium parking lot, pending river levels, I guess, so. We've used our landfill credit, remaining amount for this in the past. It is a self-haul. Have dumpsters there, do have to show proof of residency within the city of Burlington, water bill or license for that, and then dispose of yourself, so. Last year, we had two locations, I think that was good, get out in the North Hill, South Hill area, but just based on the volume and size of lot that we need, I know on the south side, it was causing some traffic concerns there, so. Back to the South Auditorium parking lot.
Is there also going to be a tree planting demonstration at some point?
There is a tree planting, that is Saturday as well, at nine AM.
Yes.
Yep.
At Riverside Park.
Yep, thank you.
Pending, pending the...
Right, yeah.
Pending the water, because it could be that road might be plugged off.
I might, I might be looking for someplace to stay over the next few days.
You got your tent? I got some room.
We always have room.
Yeah, there are a couple things coming up. Tomorrow night, Tuesday night, starting at six-thirty, is Downtown Partners' one singular fundraiser, so if you need tickets, come see me or someone at Downtown Partners. Also, this weekend is the Alzheimer's Walk, so you can either join as a team, or individuals can walk. Registration starts at nine at the port, and the walk starts at ten-thirty. And then, I got my cart. I'm so excited. It was like Christmas, seriously. I got my cart, my sixty-five gallon cart, and I live on a pretty good incline, so I'm like, ah, I better see if this is going to work, and you know what, you tilt that baby back with the handle and zip on up, she went on up the hill, and I felt like I had conquered a triathlon or something, because I'm hearing a lot of complaints at how big and heavy and bulky, and, and they're not. I didn't have any trouble getting it up the hill at all, so. Created my, finished my triathlon cart roll, and I'm very happy. Thank you, Don.
Well, that, that's what has been missing for this meeting for me, is Don didn't have to get up and talk about trash cans, so, thank you, Don, for that. It's kind of nice to have a break, although I do like it when you speak. Yeah, Matt and I did hold up the city councils end.
We did?
Only two of us, two of us against four, teams of four, and we didn't place, but we, we, we did well. So, we won these swanky hats, taking bids on them, if anyone wants mine, I don't...
And Matt took out a squirrel. Tell them about your...
No, that was...
That was another time.
But anyway, that's all I have. I would, I would, you know, it was a very informative meeting today, but I would, or restate what I said earlier, hopefully, as long as we can see Mr. Wells hit those numbers, we have patience as a community to see it, to see that project go through, because it was something that everybody's looking forward to, and now, in the eleventh hour, as we try to rebuild it, we need to make sure we're we're holding him to the, holding him accountable, but also having some patience, because it'll be a great thing for downtown.
Very good. I just have a couple things. On, this weekend, Friday, is the annual meeting fundraiser for the Art Center, and that's always a good time, and all kinds of fun stuff to do, and they honor the artist of the year, and it's just fun to see everyone do some of those activities, and then, what else is going on? Oh, I think I just wanted to talk about the City Day in the Park, which I'll probably end up going to, because it's right by the dog park, and we frequent there, so, that's all I have.
Good.
Good.
So, carts are all delivered now? Going to make them get up?
I was going to ask that question, but I didn't want to be the guy that asked that question.
I hinted at it, I skirted it.
I love the slow walk.
Hi, Don.
No, all the carts are not delivered. I was notified this afternoon that there has been a hiccup. I'm not one who likes hiccups, but there's nothing I can do about it. They had shipped to us insufficient number of carts. We had a discussion on the phone with the contractor today. I'm not really sure, they were throwing a lot of numbers at me. I had prepared, was getting ready to make an order for some additional carts. We've had right now, I'm guessing that we probably have at least two-hundred-and-fifty addresses. I'm going to guess it'll be more like three-hundred plus, that residents who have asked for cart size changes, exchanges. That grace period that we instituted goes through Friday, the nineteenth, so it's two weeks from this past Friday, yet for people to make exchanges at no additional charge, and I'm guessing we're somewhere in a neighborhood of two-hundred-and-fifty. I had planned for having sixty, thirty-five gallon carts in inventory, once all the deliveries were made, and based on the exchanges, I would say that we probably, right now, have about, we're going to have about a hundred-and-fifteen. So, people are turning the thirty-fives in. They are finding that the cart holds less than what they thought. They have tried to take a thirty-three gallon can from a, a thirty-five, thirty-three gallon bag from a thirty-three gallon can and put it in a thirty-five gallon cart, and are very surprised that it doesn't fit in there very well. We've had an increase in the number of ninety-five gallon carts. I had ordered what I thought was sufficient number of ninety-fives, based on the original order. There's been a lot of people asking for a second cart. I am, right now, thirty, ninety-six gallon carts in the hole. I'm going to be short thirty from what I had ordered for inventory, so there is a big demand for ninety-sixes. And as far as the sixty-fives, the middle-sized cart, I had ninety-two planned for inventory, and we're down to, right now, about fifty, so. I'm planning on processing an order for probably somewhere in a neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred-and-fifteen. Ninety-fives to make up the shortfall, and plus have some more there for demand. I'm probably looking at maybe between twenty-five and fifty more sixty-fives. I'm not getting any more thirty-fives, because people are returning those carts to us. Although, that certainly was one of the popular sizes that asked for via the mailer and the computer system. The hiccup is, again, that the contractor did not supply us with sufficient carts to cover our order. Based on all the numbers that he was sharing with me, I know that as of this morning, we believe that we had approximately seventy-two households who had yet to receive their cart. The contractor had hoped to have been finished with their deliveries Friday, and then it was Saturday, and then they were working today, and it was this afternoon that they called and said, "We have a problem. We have insufficient number of carts." And, and I believe there's somewhere in a neighborhood of seventy carts short. Why that is exactly, I didn't quite understand. And then, we have a long list of unknowns to us. We don't believe that the, some problems that have been, have to be resolved with some of our customers, so. What's going to happen, as I understand it, is that they'll use up the rest of the inventory that they have on-site, so that virtually all the carts that they have here in Burlington have been delivered. Will still result in up to seventy households that don't have their carts yet. They have placed in the manufacturing schedule at the factories to produce, I believe, both the ninety-fives and the sixty-fives on October twenty-second. And they expect that to have that one day, so sometime during the week of the twenty-second, we'll see the carts that we've been shorted, as well as whatever the final order is I put in for, to supply us with inventory to address the additional carts that I feel we need to have. And, of course, not having any extra carts, we're not going to be able to do the exchanges that have been requested from this cart size to the other cart size. Well, I guess that's not really true. I guess if I think about it here, standing here, if we wanted to, we could go out and start, take this cart from here, put it over there, maybe take that cart from there and put it back over here. As far as efficiency goes, it's going to be something brand-new to us, and I'm not really sure how we're going to handle it, but is it likely we'll have all the carts delivered and exchanged by November first? We're sure, sure going to try, but we just won't know until we actually get into it. So, that's the status of the cart program.
Sorry about that, Don, I jinxed you.
No, that's fine. Any other questions or wanting clarification?
I don't think so.
We've handled our fair share of calls, I'll say that, at the wastewater treatment plant. Between myself and Julie, we've, have found very little time to do anything else but answer phones, answer questions. Some of them are easy, and some of them are not so easy to deal with.
Is the majority of people still going to a larger cart versus a smaller cart?
More people, yes, more people are moving away from the thirty-fives to the sixty-fives, and the sixty-fives to the ninety-fives, and some people have even jumped from the thirty-fives to the ninety-fives. And I'm kind of surprised at the number of calls that we've received, actually, for people who actually want a second cart. They want an additional sixty-five, or they want an additional ninety-five. We have a number of people who have asked for that. So, as far as the collection is going, it's really still too early to say. As of last week, they were getting the carts that were being used. Not everybody started using their carts right away. They already had garbage in their existing cans and bags, and did not set their carts out, but we did run into carts. I think that they commented to me that, like on Monday's route, they thought maybe seventy percent of the households had their carts in use. We saw similar numbers throughout the week, and they were able to get the carts picked up. Some areas tend to be more, a little bit more difficult, as far as the terrain on which they're working, but the equipment has been working fine for us, and this week will be a truer test, because there'll be closer to a full complement of carts out there. And there'll be a learning curve that we have to apply.
And Don, if they want to get rid of their old cart, just sit it out with a big note on it that says, "Pit, don't try to cram it in their smaller, or their bigger cart, do they get stuck, maybe, or..."
Yeah, I think from our perspective, we certainly would rather see any cans that are be, to be thrown away, set aside next to the cart rather than in the cart.
What about on top of the cart?
Well, I guess, I guess if they set it on the, on top of the cart, I mean, if it's empty...
I just happened to see it one day.
If it's empty.
This is really, it's quite tall, then.
I'm one of those that put it, I just picked up my whole can and set it inside my ninety-five gallon, it fit perfectly, so when they emptied it, it just took away.
As long as it fits, I guess you weren't like cramming it in there.
It didn't, I didn't cram it, just, but I have the ninety-five gallon can, so it wasn't a big deal.
And in two weeks, I believe it's, what is the, Monday, what's the date of the Monday, is it twenty-second? That's when our leaf program begins, so we're only two weeks, two weeks away from our leaf program. So, as far as the old cans, people have used and will continue to use their old cans for leaf collection, and...
I think that's a great reuse, I like that.
And you can use your new cart for that set out for leaves as well.
You can. Now, that pickup, is it the day after your trash pickup, is that right?
Yes, yes. It's the day after, it's always curbside, even if your garbage is picked up at the alley. Leaves are always picked up at curbside, just like the recycling program.
So, if someone were Friday pickup, the leaf pickup would be Monday?
People, Friday's route get confused. Monday, the twenty-second, that is Friday's first pickup, so they need to be thinking ahead. And I'm not really sure what the burning rules are pertaining to leaves. I think, is it the month of November, April and November? If you're burning Wednesdays and Saturdays, between ten AM, I think, and five PM, the wind has to be no greater than ten miles per hour, I believe. If you have questions, call the fire department.
Definitely, Don.
Not Don.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Don's folks have taken an awful lot of phone calls.
Oh, my.
City, City Hall, second floor, has taken quite a few as well, and so has the water department, but the majority have gone through folks down there in, at the sewer plant, they've done a phenomenal job with having, just trying to keep up with it. Don's put in a lot of extra time besides his regular hours. Certainly appreciated your willingness to visit with folks outside of the work, the work schedule to... Not everyone's, not everyone's happy with the program change, and, and I'd certainly appreciate your willingness to, to work with folks and try to, where there, where there is angst, to try to work through it. The only other thing I had, I know, mentioned that Charlie is, is leaving.
He's already gone.
He's gone for today, but he'll, he'll be going up to City Cedar Rapids. Charlie, working here, you're, you've advertised, I think, last, last week, you put ads out to, to replace that position. Charlie went above and beyond what the, the job description was, did a lot with that position that was not expected before, and depending on who's coming in there, we may or may not see that kind of stuff happening in the future. So, we, we got an awful lot more out of that position than what it was really designed for. I think the accounting department still would have liked to see someone who's a, more of an accounting background in it, but it's just not the nature of what that position is. You know, Charlie has been someone who's looked to...
Um, you know, Charlie has been someone who's looked to, uh, move, where, where can he advance? He kind of got the impression that Eric wasn't going to be retiring anytime soon, uh, so we had, he knew that that wasn't going to be an option for him. Um, he's looked at other, thought about other options, asked us about things and tried to put himself in a position to do this for the last couple of years and, uh, I just wish him the best as he moves forward because he did a phenomenal job while he was here.
You're here.
Sure.
That's it.
Okay, all right, well, I think that's it. Uh, good night.